We call a meeting to order. Let's stand and say the last thing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm here to attend our counseling. So we do have a forum. Let's look at our agenda. And I guess I would have one thing to approve, and that would be a resignation from Chad Gornler that you see is on your agenda to point to planning. For the planning commission, we haven't accepted his resignation. So we'll need to do that first, and then I will appoint. So I guess we could just combine that with number 12. And it's the same thing have to be done with the job description.
No, to my knowledge, no, it should be fine.
Okay. Okay, are there any other additions or corrections to be made?
We have a vote to approve the agenda.
Correct.
Okay, you've been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Is there any item that you'd like to pull from the consent agenda that for further discussion? If not, I would move approval.
Seconded.
Move consecutively. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Number four, now start the human field.
Thank you, Mayor Olson. Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell, who serves upon counsel for the city. We are here for an approval of a change on the Homestead Rural Rehabilitation Project. Over the last two months, we've had many discussions and have determined that the total principal amount will not change, but we need to move your authorization from one series, Series A, down to Series C of the bonds so that Central National can purchase the construction loan portion of Series A and the total principal amount of $2 million. And that's the maximum of what their approval was set forth. Fortunately, that came subsequent, that whole discussion came subsequent to your consideration of the original ordinance and then in late May. This is one of two final steps that we have to be able to move forward, get approval from all of the investors, and move forward to close. The other is not reflected in these documents, but we might as well just consider it all at the same time. And that is, there needs to be a change to the term set forth in the lease. The lease needs to be a very long-term lease. It was originally set up as 30 years, but it would be subject to being terminated as soon as the bonds were paid off, which would be anticipated to be no more than 15 years out. The council for certain tax credit investors has said, oh, we think that you should change that lease to 65 years. Again, with the understanding that the lease will terminate as soon as the bonds are paid off. So there is one change that we would like to have approved by this council and/or the mayor. It's not really something that you need to approve separately, but would like your consensus that the city will agree to change the originally approved lease term from 30 years to 65 years.
Okay, where is that?
That is not reflected in your documents. You have to see for you today.
At all. Okay, that's three in the good mind again.
And this would be something that ordinarily, I would think would be subject to your discretion, Mayor Olson.
Right.
And so if you want to just leave it at that, that would be fine. But I did promise the participants that I would bring it up today.
All right, so you want that discussion before we even take on this?
That would be fine.
All right. Who wants to start that discussion?
Madam Mayor, I need to accuse myself of the discussion and voting on this. That my vote not count in the negative or the positive of my insurance through Central National.
Okay. Jerry, you got an opinion to start with?
Why the change from 30 to 65?
You know, it's the only requirement that their council has requested. It's a firm out of Omaha that, quite frankly, a competitor of Gilmore and Bell's. And I think they had to find a change. And so they felt that 65 years was what they needed in order to approve the documents for their tax credit investors to put money into this project. Again, there is an obligation that the lease will terminate as soon as the bonds are paid off. So no one anticipates that this lease will go on for 15 years. However, for purposes of documentation, this has been their request.
Do you have any further discussion?
It seems like an awfully long period of time.
Chris?
I just think it seems awfully long, too.
Jerry? I think I'm in the same agreement that this would be too long of an agreement to come to for the sake of whoever is going to be involved with this whole thing. So I could be in favor of extending that.
What if we disagree with them? They're not going to give us the money or not?
They will not give you, they will not put the money into the project, which may stop the whole project, unfortunately.
Just for clarification purposes, the years will only be dictated by the number of years in which the bond is in effect and enforced.
That is correct.
Once the bond is paid off, that number becomes a nonentity. It really has no effect because it's tied to the bond. So to me, it is simply a clerical distinction that lawyers make to justify their fees associated with review of documentation. And in effect, as long as we are guaranteed that only the lease is only applicable for the same period as the bonds are in place, they could make it 1,000 years. It really does not affect the product.
What about the tax exemption down the road? If there's a way that could be put back on the tax rules? If some state in our state legislature, would that be effective at all, and or not?
To the best of my knowledge, the tax situation is really governed through the federal side of the Section 42 Housing Protocol. And so in that respect, I think it would have to fall to whatever guidelines those federal policies dictate to the handling of the taxes associated with this investment. What the, keep all the pieces separate. What the first question we're talking about is, will, is it acceptable to extend the terms of the lease, which is referenced in the lease agreement between Homestead Rural Rehabilitation and the City of America, with the express understanding that that is not to exceed 65 years, but it will cease after the bonds are paid off in full, which is anticipated 15 years. So that's the first point here. And we can talk about other things, too. But if you start talking about taxes and down the future and what Section 42 does and the IRB rules, let's try to keep the, I mean, I'll answer them, but...
Well, I would think they could be somewhat connected there, or not?
The bond will be paid off, anticipated to be paid off in 15 years, and that will be the terms of the lease that we are agreeing to with Homestead Rural Rehabilitation. So the question is, will you accept the 30-year being changed to a 65-year? Now, what happens to the taxation basis is wholly dependent upon when that bond's paid off and then under what section of tax status that those properties are still at. Two separate issues now, like, well...
But still connected a little bit. Because he just said as long as there...
As long, the longest that you may grant an abatement of this property under IRBs is 10 years.
10 years, okay. Then they would have to ask for them again?
But Tom Bishop intends to petition the Court of Tax Appeals for an order exempting this project under the fact that it's the Section 42 housing. So an unrelated basis upon which he is planning to petition the Court of Tax Appeals to have this prominently exempted from the tax rules. That cannot be done until after the project is up and completed, which is why he petitioned the city to grant this 10-year period under the issuance of the bonds. So the fact that the lease would be for longer term does not in any way impact the property tax abatement being granted by the city. That's a maximum of 10 years.
Okay, is there any way of getting that, of those, of those, getting it down to a lesser time or not?
Not to my knowledge. This has been their one request. So if we don't agree with that, I probably don't know. Jeffrey, let's find me, come in through the tax department.
Jerry, we still need your opinion. Okay. Are we ready for the questions? Okay. I don't know that we need to go on that for a second. Do we need to settle that first, then? Or he is telling us?
I'm, no, I'm not.
Would we have to put that number in here, then, in some way, amend this?
That will go into the lease document.
Okay.
So it will not in any way impact this ordinance shifting the dollars from Series A to Series C. It's a separate issue.
Okay, so that'll come at a later date?
It will be incorporated into the lease that the city will need to solve.
Okay.
And if this governing body rejects that concept, then I need to know sooner rather than later.
Well, then we do need a motion on the first motion, for the resolution if we're going to do that, correct?
Well, you're, this would just be a motion approving the 65-year lease.
All right, so you do want that? Yeah, in order to get, put it into a delay's agreement?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so everybody wants to do that particular motion?
Move to be changed into the 65-year.
Okay, is there a second?
All second.
Chris is seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? I'll have to oppose that, and I don't know what our signature. I have to take care of the tiebreaker.
Typically, they'll say if motion isn't passed, if it's tied, if there's nobody to break a tie, then it's a motion failed, really.
Okay, until we get that in writing, I have to reject it until I actually see it in a document. Really do. Might change to 75% or something like this. I just don't like to say something, and then we might have a change again, so.
Okay, well, I will communicate with the parties that that has been rejected by this governing body. And I apologize. I did not want to change the documents again.
Right.
So I didn't bring them tonight for you to see it.
And this would be in that bond...
I'm counsel to you, and I would not change it.
And that's in that bond agreement that we haven't got a lease? It's in the lease, but where's all the bond agreements that we looked at at that time when I was just signed? Okay, I guess then we move on. Do you have anything further that you want to add with us?
I have some questions for Roger. Look the likelihood now that the Homestead project will not move forward based on the previous vote. Now, have you done any work to, I know at one of the previous meetings there was a discussion on economic impact of that project to the city. Could you comment on what potentially could be lost to the city based on our current action, previous actions tonight?
When I did the projections, looking at it from a commerce impact for our city, I used the term of 30 years for my analysis that I did, which was how the original bond offering was written. And I have a copy that I can share with each. I'll take it through. But I guess with your permission, I want to address the 65 versus the 30 on a term from an economic impact and the reality for the investor community. The move to take it to 65 versus 30, these particular bonds are offered to purchasers as a way of sheltering income tax, both from a state and a federal tax form. So as a personal investor, I'm always looking for municipality offerings of this nature. And by putting 65 years versus 30 years on it, honestly, as an investor, I know that I won't be able to lock for 65 years because no company, no community will put out a bond that they're going to float that long. So I know it's going to be called in advance. So as far as what was presented this evening, 65 versus 30 from a personal liability standpoint or from the city's liability standpoint, it has no impact on the overall equation. With your permission, I would like to share with you just really how important this particular project to our community is, from my opinion, as we move ahead. The project consists of adding 20 new residences and rehabilitating 20 existing. The 20 existing, right now occupancy has dropped to 25%. They have 15 unoccupied units, and 10 of which have been deemed uninhabitable because the conditions have fallen that far in this project. So from that, the actions will result in up to 35 additional households in our community in the next two to three years as this project's completed. The immediate financial impacts for our community, there's $313,500 in income and revenues that will be generated for our local tradesmen doing the rehab on the September complex. Additionally, the construction of the duplexes, which we have nine more units of the 18 to do. It is a connection between 408 and the trades. So we're going to have local contractors bidding on potential of $1,415,000 in business. Along with that, the agreements of how this particular company works it, our students from the high school will be able to work shoulder to shoulder with actual contractors and gain that educational piece that doesn't exist in the lab-only environment. So initially, that's going to drop in. The other impact, there's currently a waiting list for the duplexes that we have on the east side of town. We have eight widows or widowers in our community that have signed up waiting to get into this type of living. So with that, the impact in our market will be between $1,125,000 and $1,825,000 based on the current value of their homes that they'll be placing on the market. The majority of the homes are in the sweet spot in our market, which is $100,000 to $165,000. That's the prime spot. That's when the house is on the market, the lease. So if we do get the duplexes, then we have at least eight of them that are going to be filled, really, upon completion. Then we open up the commerce of trade, and that will also have a residual effect. The $1,800,000 figure includes, we have a sector in our community of Ori I've spoken to or about it. They're in homes that are valued at $50,000 to $60,000 right now. They've become affluent enough, they want to bump up to the next, you know, go from the two-bedroom starter to the three-bedroom or four-bedroom. So not only will our real estate market have that initial with the higher value, it'll have a backfill to drive into our community. Just looking at this project from the residuals that come from it, annually, we'll have $32,375 added to the revenue stream for city-owned utilities. That's $925 on average for these 35 households that'll be coming back online. The income that's generated from getting 35 more residents established in our community is $707,000 annually. And then, from the tourism side of it, revenues associated with this type of living arrangements that are being built would estimate another $12,000 in annual revenues to our community through hospitality that we have in our town, as well as lodging. The intangibles of this project, and I've really got to bring those forward, the impact that this makes. You know, our sports center draws a ton outside visitors to our town, and they're coming down Hyatt House. Their first impression as this project moves forward is that we're an innovative, growing community. They're going to see brand-new housing. And then where do they go? They go down to the end of the street to turn. What do they see? They see a great country club. So I think it's critical to us, and in September, when you turn the corner and you're headed in, yes, we got an opportunity on the south side of the road, but the north side of the road, this will address that. The project, you know, one thing I've learned about going from private business to public, definitely deal with all personalities. So a lot of this, I got to take personality out of it. This project is being managed by a 501(c)(3) corporation that has administered eight different projects of this nature in our state. They're all successful to this point. In addition to that, this corporation has assisted 896 homeowners, first-time homeowner buyers in 78 of the 105 counties in our state. The company's been in business since 1998. I pulled their Better Business Bureau rating. They carry an A-plus rating for the entire entity in all cities that they operate, including their brand-new one that came online of the whole bank. So, and I pulled up to find out how many complaints they had filed with the Better Business Bureau and/or the Attorney General's Office. They have none in the last three years. So regardless of it, we're bringing it. Yes, they're from another town, but they have a very proven track record in this type of specialized housing and refurberation of existing facilities. And the third thing, intangible impact, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this with the full console. We granted the construction, the planning, zoning variances to move it forward. Reversion on the project will be detrimental to the credibility of our city and its desire to grow. So it is of a concern to me. I really would like to see this. The overall impact as it comes, and again, I base this on 30 years when I did it. I can change it to 65 as we're going and give you the improvised numbers. But you, as a city, we have $0 of liability tied to this project. Everything falls on the investor group and a local bank. When I received word that the change and Steele was going to have to come down, I reviewed the documents trying to figure out why were we moving the money the way it was going? And basically, it comes down to, we're putting more on the direct operations. They're responsible for their actions. They're not going in with just $5,000 out-of-pocket investment. They're putting, bottom line, for a local bank, they're taking over $2 million of direct risk out of our community and putting it on their ledger as we move forward. I did all of the tax projections to see where we're at. The abated taxes for the 30-year period, I'm speaking purely city dollars, okay? And again, on all my calculations, I'm keeping it simple. I'm not using actuation tables. I'm not using depreciation, any of that. I'm just taking straight-line values so we can keep it all in perspective here. But it's $416,992.64 is the amount of taxes that will be abated on this project for the 30-year term. We'll collect, over the increased revenue, $81,096 in sales tax in our community. So the impact there, we've really dropped it down to 326, 327 on abated taxes. The value of that duplex project is $2,090,000 is what I've projected out based on their cost per square foot to build and investments made with it. So when everything's said and done, over the course of the next 30 years, this project stands to stimulate our community commerce by $26 million over the course of that time. So coming down to, you know, my recommendations is that we support the project and the bonding offer. Again, we're not at risk. It helps our local community with over $26 million in commerce, creates local employment opportunities as we're coming out of the gate. And we manage by a company that has, I just, I can't find any other property management company that has a better performance rating since 1998, actually, even if you look at the last four years. And there's been a number of investment companies tried to get in to the affordable housing market. Their complaints are off the chart. So I felt very comfortable about this. At the end of the day, it comes down to lack of participation in this project. What it amounts to, we're going to get from the existing properties up there. We'll have no appreciation in value. We're facing, I mean, the one, one half of that went to a total valuation of $305,000 from the year before of $340,000. The other property dropped $40,000 in assessed value. So we're dealing with the September project that has reached its usable lifespan. And if it doesn't get an investment group, we could have even larger at-risk. But I wanted everybody to know these, based on my predictions, again, simple, straight-line projections, this really is an important project to our community overall.
Well, I'm not saying that it's not very important, but I just, I didn't have the others. Years there just kind of bothered me that it didn't happen in black and white, probably, you know, that part of it. I'm not...
May I ask you if Steele come back with it in?
Oh, yes, I would. I would be very happy if she could bring me back, you know, the total amount with that particular, that amount in there. Yes, I would be in favor. I'm not, the whole thing I've been in for, but I don't like to have something thrown into us at the last minute here that we have to consider. And 65 years did sound like an awful lot. Or what was it, the difference in 30 years there?
Yeah, I can say there's a difference in 35 years that's floating out there. But what that is, is it's a marketing tool to get a bond to sell before somebody else's bond on the open market.
Maybe I just don't know enough about that part of it.
Most people are familiar with the Wolf Creek Power Plant in Burlington, Kansas. They sponsored the same type of bond offer. And that particular one, at one point, had a 75-year offering on it.
It did.
Okay? And it ended up being issued at only 25. But from a marketing standpoint, they understood the general public was going to be nervous enough about nuclear power that if they didn't put a bond out there that was attractive to investors, they would never pay for that project. So, Council, that's... So, council, that's the current...
Maybe that's what you and I need to talk about, the marketing part of it.
Okay. You know, Ms. Steele, obviously, she's our representative, and she has to, I don't have to hold that line. I look at it from an investor's standpoint. He paid me the real economy, so that's what I'm looking at. Any other questions that might answer? That'll be council decision.